Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Sorry. Are we ready?
You're live.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll take care of some business for our transcriptionist first. This evening, we have three board members that are absent: Mr. Numcheck, Ms. Witt, and Ms. Hueson. Second will be the approval of November 2nd, 2022 minutes. I have an amendment first to put into the minutes. Page 10 of the minutes. At the bottom of the page, after the paragraph "Whereas the application is located in the DMU zone", it was not put in a resolution, wasn't added, but it's also "As per the DMU regulations, the planning board waives parking requirements." I'll need a motion to -- for that amendment. Mr. Madden, second, Mr. Higby. Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is 108 La Cora Street LLC, 9 to 29 Canal Street, six-month extension request. This is from Andrew Leider, attorney at law. Mrs. Two, Secretary, City of Middletown Planning Board. Request for extension to obtain building permit for 9 to 29 Canal Street renovation. Applicant: 108 La Cora Street LLC. Dear Martina, I am asking for a six-month extension of our approval by the planning board to obtain a building permit for the renovation of 9 to 29 Canal Street. Our architect did not complete the plans for renovation until August 2022. We are still awaiting bids for the subcontractors in order to -- for us to obtain construction financing from our bank. I am the managing member of the applicant. Yours truly, Andrew Leider. I need a motion to accept the extension. Mr. Higby, second, Mr. Madden. Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
And Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. We have an unusual situation this evening, where we have -- right now, we have four board members present. That means that's our quorum. Your application will have to receive four votes, a unanimous vote, in order to get your approval. We have to tell you that because if you feel you're not going to get your approval, you -- we need to adjourn your application. But you can come up, you can present. We have public hearing tonight. We'll go through the whole process. If at any time in that process you don't feel comfortable, let us know. All right? First on the agenda is Judith Perino, 17 to 39 Midland Avenue Extension, Building 11, powder coating. Good evening. State your name for the record, please.
Gabriel Perino.
And your intentions.
Excuse me?
What you plan on doing?
Oh, we want to move from 43-51, John Carbone's building, over to Building Number 11, which is about 800 feet away or 1,000 feet away into the other complex over there.
Understood.
And everything's the same. The business is the same. Nothing's changed. Still powder coating. Nothing added to it or taken away.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Ms. Two, do we have the mail-ins? Okay. In that case, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address this application, please step forward. Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing? Do we have anyone on the telephone? Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay, we'll go to the board for any comments, concerns. Nothing? Okay. We'll go back to the public hearing one more time. Anyone present wishing to address this application, please step forward. Ms. Hanson, anyone online?
Not at this time.
We're going to close the public hearing. Go back to the board one more time for any concerns, questions.
Mr. Atkins, any concerns?
I have no concerns. This space was previously used for powder coating as well. So they're fine. They're good.
And Mr. Welsh?
No problem whatsoever.
Do we have hours of operation?
The only thing we're going to have to add is the hours of operation. When do you plan to be open, sir?
Um, ASAP.
No, what timeframe?
Oh, timeframe, uh, 9 to 6, five days.
9:00 AM to 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Monday through Friday?
Yep, that's correct.
Thank you. All right, since we have nothing--
Your owner's endorsement?
We have everything. Yeah, okay, ready to go. Yep. All right. On the resolution concerning Judith Perino, 17 to 39 Midland Avenue Extension, Building 11, powder coating. Hours of operation will be from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Parking, as per the site plan submitted. This will be subject to the City of Middletown DPW and the City of Middletown Fire Department inspections. Approvals, inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the County of Orange, and the State of New York, if applicable. If, in addition, throughout any of the review process the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. Whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of a special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. Basically, you need to start work within six months. If you do not, please send a letter of extension for your approval to the board. Okay, so I need a motion. Mr. Britto, Mr. Higby. Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Another strange situation. Since I am a Bell employee, I must recuse myself and also recuse myself as chairman, which means there will only be three voting members. Impossible to reach a quorum. I offer the applicant this. We can put you last on the agenda to see if one of our members shows up. We've called everyone. We know what's going on except for one member has not returned our calls. So you have the choice. You will not be approved one way or the other. We do not have a quorum. But we can wait if you so desire.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that the applicant, since it is noticed for a public hearing, that the applicant make his presentation and then it be put over for future consideration. If the applicant wants to wait until the end of the agenda to do so, that would be fine.
Okay.
But just that the public hearing should be opened since it was noticed to the public.
Okay, fine. Did you understand that? In other words, you can wait to even present. We have to do you tonight because the public hearing notice was sent out.
I'm willing to wait.
All right. We'll call you as soon as your time has come. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, so we're going to skip over Bell momentarily and move on to Marco Antonio Nala Padilla, 9 King Street, Drinking Establishment with Beer and Wine Liquor License.
Is somebody here to make a presentation?
For 9 King Street? No? All right, well, we'll move on.
We'll put that as well on the back of the agenda.
Tonight's a good night. All right, next on the agenda. Shalonda Smith. Sorry if I mispronounced that. 12 Washington Street, Clothing Boutique. Good evening.
Good evening. You did great. Pronounced my name correct.
Please state your name for the record.
Shalonda Smith.
And what you plan on doing?
Opening a clothing boutique. I have four different brands that I've had in the works for a couple of years. I just retired from New York City Correction after 21 years, so finally trying to get my clothing brands up and running.
Okay, thank you.
What are your hours of operation?
From 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
And what days of the week?
Seven days a week.
Okay. Ms. Two, do we have the mail-ins?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Then I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing? We do. Do we have anyone on the telephone by any chance? Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay. So under the public hearing, I'm going to read a letter that we received. Dear Mr. Cabazola, Chairman, I am in favor of this application of Ms. Smith for a site plan approval and special use permit for her business. Sincerely, Linda H. Reese, 39 East Avenue. Okay, so that's in for the record. Go through the board for any comments, questions, concerns? Okay, back to the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
And I'm going to close the public hearing. Go on to the board one more time. Like to make any comments or questions?
Mr. Atkins, any concerns?
I have no concerns. I did a site visit. Everything is good to go.
Mr. Welsh?
Everything's fine.
Then on the resolution for 12 Washington Street Clothing Boutique. Subject to: City of Middletown DPW and City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the City of Orange, and the State of New York, if applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant shall -- will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. Whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. Basically, if you don't start work on your project in the next six months, please send us a letter of extension to the board.
Okay.
All right, so you keep your approval active. All right? All right, whereas this application is located in the DMU zone, therefore applicants must submit and receive approval from the Department of Public Works according to the Chapter 407, Solid Waste, Article 2, Collection, Section 407-3, Collection, and comply with this section and any other sections enacted by the common council from this date forward. Therefore, applicants must receive approval from the Architectural Review Board on all facade work, exterior work in general, and exterior signage. Therefore, and the planning board will waive parking regulations. Need a motion? Mr. Madden, I need a second. Mr. Britto. Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Get with the DPW. Thank you very much.
Thank you much. Have a good night.
Okay, next on our agenda. Also, we've had it in the minutes, so I have to make -- be very cautious going forward that I put whatever we discussed in the minutes in the resolution. And the hours of operation for that last one will be 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM daily. Just have to make sure we're consistent going forward. All right? Thank you. Next on the agenda, Rosa Mosquada, 30 North Street Beauty Salon.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good evening. How are you?
My name is Rosa Mosquada, and I want to open a beauty salon on 30 North Street. It's going to consist of hair, nails, body sculpting, and esthetician.
Ms. Two, do we have the mail-ins?
Yes, we do.
Great, we'll open the public hearing then. Anyone on telephone? Any written responses? Anyone present wishing to step forward and make a comment on this application? Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay. We'll go through the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. I did hear you say nails. Is that true?
Yeah.
All right, I didn't see that in the application.
I swear I wrote that down.
That may require-- Is it?
The body sculpting. Does that require a license?
Um, no, not at the moment, no. I did go to school for it. I got certificates for it. Everything is non-invasive, so I don't use any needles or anything like that. So at the moment, it doesn't need a license for it.
Mr. Atkins, any concerns?
I would just say we need to have a conversation when you're building out and getting ready to open for the nails section.
Okay.
You have to have the proper ventilation in there.
Okay.
Okay? That's all.
Mr. Welsh, any concerns?
Everything's fine.
We have the hours of operation here. Yeah. It's Monday from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Close Sunday, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, we'll just add that to the resolution. Mr. Madden, question?
The backroom esthetician, can you explain that, please?
The backroom, it's -- I was going to use it for esthetician. I'm not too sure what I'm going to use the backroom yet for. There is a sink back there that I would want to use it for, for the washing, for the washing of the hair and things like that.
If she adds that, does she have to come back for approval on that? Just that?
No, the space is already there.
Okay.
Did you close the public hearing?
Last time, yeah.
Not this?
Not yet, no.
Oh, okay.
We haven't got that far yet, I don't think. No. All right. We go back to the public hearing one more time. Anyone present wishing to comment on this application, please step forward. Ms. Hanson, anyone online?
Not at this time.
And then I'm going to close the public hearing. Go back one more time to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. Okay. On the resolution for Rosa Mosquada, 30 North Street Beauty Salon. Hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, closed on Sunday. Subject to: City of Middletown DPW and City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, ordinances of the City of Middletown, the County of Orange, and the State of New York, especially if there's any licensing that is required. Licensing from the state, county, or Middletown need to be shown, presented, and that's for each employee that you have. Okay? In addition, if throughout any of the review process the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables throughout through an architect or an engineer licensed in the state of New York. Whereas pursuant to the city code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of the special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. In other words, if you don't get your beauty salon started within the six-month period, please send us a letter telling us that you need an extension of time. Whereas this application is located in the DMU zone, therefore applicants must submit and receive approval from the Department of Public Works according to Chapter 407, Solid Waste, Article 2, Collection, Section 407-3, Collection, and comply with this section and any other sections enacted by the common council from this date forward. Therefore, applicants must receive approval from the Architectural Review Board for all facade work, exterior work in general, and exterior signage. Therefore, and the planning board will waive parking regulations. I need a motion? Mr. Britto, I need a second. Mr. Madden? Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
Is that 21 West Main is not on?
Uh, no, they're on.
Oh, they're on, okay.
Yes.
Different order, okay.
Yep, yep, great in order.
Different order than we have.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. Next up is Fresh Time Bin Bin Food, Inc., 21 West Main Street, Eating and Drinking Establishment with Beer and Wine Liquor License. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Because he looked at English, so I come to translate, to help him.
Okay. State your name for the record.
Yes, good evening, everyone.
And what do you plan on doing?
Can you just make sure you go into the mic, please? Because there's people online.
Yes, I come to here to apply for a liquor license.
Yeah, you have to speak into the mic, yes.
Yes, today I come here to apply for a liquor license for our restaurant.
Okay. Ms. Two, do we have the mail-ins?
Yes, we do.
Great, then we'll open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to comment on this application, please step forward. Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing? Anybody on the telephone? Okay. Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay, then we'll go to the board for any questions or comments or concerns.
Yes, Mr. Madden. Is this an existing restaurant that's already open and they're just expanding to have a wine and beer license? Or is this a new restaurant?
You can answer the question. Go ahead.
Yes, actually, we just take over an restaurant at May this year. The old owner have restaurant, but he -- we take over this restaurant, so the old owner take a liquor license. And so we, now we are the Hanami Japanese restaurants owner. So we want, because a lot of customer come to our restaurant to ask for like, I want some beer, I want a socket. So but for now, you know, we don't have a liquor license, so we just tell the customer, sorry, we don't have liquor license. So but because I think a lot of customer require, they hope we have like liquor license to show some beer and or socket. Because usually for the Japanese restaurant, we, you know, most of customer want a Japanese food to come with like a socket, so we apply for license now.
So are you operating a restaurant right now?
Yes.
Okay.
They took over an existing--
Restaurant.
--restaurant. And now they want to have beer and wine at the restaurant.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Got it. Did that answer your question, Mr. Madden?
Yes, it did.
Thank you.
We don't grant the license, the liquor license.
We do not.
We do not.
State, SLA does. State Liquor Authority of New York.
Right.
They're only here to ask for the use. Any concerns, Mr. Atkins?
I have no concerns. Are you guys staying under the same name? Is it going to be Hanami?
Hanami Japanese restaurant. We never change the name. Just in the DBA, we never change, just in the business, like a company's name. In the past, the old owner, the business name is CNY Restaurant, Inc. But now we take over this restaurant and we have a new company's name, like Fresh Time Bin Bin Food, Inc.
Okay. I have no concerns.
Mr. Welsh?
No issues.
Do we have, will their hours of operation be guided by--
The DMU zone. Right. We can read them into the record if you like, or I could just say they'll follow the DMU zone regulations.
I think you should read them into the record just based upon the applicant, so he's aware of the hours.
All right, just so everyone knows, the hours of operation in the DMU zone is Sunday through Thursday, you must close by 12:00 midnight. Okay? On Friday and Saturday, you must close by 2:00 AM.
2:00, oh, I think it's okay because at 9:00, we restaurant from Sunday to open. Sunday, we opened at 12:00 until 9:30. And on Monday, we closed on Monday. And from Tuesday to Thursday, we open at 11:00 to 10:00 o'clock. And Friday and Saturday, we opened at, from 11:00 AM to until 11:00 PM. So I think we are in a limited time, yes. So after we close, of course, no, we cannot, we will not sell any alcohol.
All right, so Sunday, you're going to be open 12:00 noon to 9:30 PM.
To 9:30 PM, yes.
On Tuesday, you'd be closed on Mondays? On Tuesdays and Thursdays, you're going to be open at 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
Tuesdays to Thursdays, sorry.
For now, we changing the time is 11:00 to 9:30.
Do you care if we make it 11:00 to 10:00 PM? Because if we want to change the hours, it doesn't matter. Just so you don't have to come back to us to change hours.
No, no, because we know, in the past, in the past, you know, the restaurant, before we take over this restaurant, I work for the Hanami Japanese restaurant, before I take this restaurant. So in the past, we work usually until 10:00 PM. It's too late for us, so we decide to go home early. Have a good rest.
9:30 it is. And then Friday and Saturday, I have 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
For now, we can go home half hour early.
Yeah, that's right.
10:30, yeah.
We don't care if you go home early.
Okay.
It's up to you.
Just don't go.
You just have to know the maximum hours you're spending there, okay? Go home, relax. All right. Any other questions from the board? Comments or concerns?
I think.
I have to close the public hearing. Any other concerns, guys?
No.
Set? All right. On the resolution.
I think you have to close the public hearing.
I did. Closed the public hearing. Yep. Uh, on the resolution for Fresh Time Bin Bin Food, Inc., 21 West Main Street, eating and drinking establishment with beer and wine liquor license. So you're subject to the City of Middletown DPW. Hold a second. I'm going to make sure your hours of operation are in here in the resolution, which is Sunday 12:00 PM to 9:30 PM. Closed on Mondays. Tuesday through Thursday, 11:00 AM to 9:30 PM. Friday and Saturday, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Now, subject to the City of Middletown DPW and the City of Middletown Fire Department inspections. Approvals and when necessary approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and following, follow the permitting process, codes, ordinances of the City of Middletown and County of Orange and the State of New York if applicable. Your license will be determined by the State Liquor Authority. You know that, right?
Yes.
Okay. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the State of New York. Whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of the special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. In other words, if you don't get your liquor license, he has to come back to us again, right?
Yes.
So if you don't get your liquor license within six months, send us a letter extending your approval, all right? Keeps your approval active.
I know.
Whereas this application is located in DMU zone. Therefore applicants must submit and receive approval from the Department of Public Works according to Chapter 407 Solid Waste, Article 2 Collection, Section 407-3 Collection, and comply with this section and any other sections enacted by the Common Council from this date forward. Therefore applicants must receive approval from the Architectural Review Board on all facade work, exterior work in general, and exterior signage. Therefore, and the planning board will waive parking regulations. Since you are an eating and drinking establishment, you're going to go for a beer and wine liquor license only. I need a motion. Mr. Madden, I need a second. Mr. Britto. Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden.
Yes.
Mr. Britto.
Yes.
Mr. Higby.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just remember, you're not allowed to serve any alcohol there until you get the SLA approval.
Yes, I know. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Well, we have to, well, we could do the preliminary if we wanted. Or do you want to do the public hearing now?
You should go home. He's not coming.
Yeah, right, he's not showing up. I don't know what's going on.
Well, what about?
We have to do the public hearing.
What about 9 King Street?
We did that.
No, they didn't show up.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Yep. Uh, anyone here representing 9 King Street? Huh.
They'll have to go through the process again.
You're up, Mr. Smith.
You're out.
I'm out, okay? I have to go through the process, all right? I'm going to have to recuse myself. I'm a Bell employee. And we are appointing, I can appoint him, right?
Yeah.
Appointing Mr. Higby as the acting chairman. And I have to step down. How about that?
Get out of my seat.
Captain Moore.
Get used to it, because it's going to be one of your guys.
May I ask a couple of questions before we start?
Yes.
Only, only because I'm trying to understand the difference or the basis of the preliminary versus the, the, I guess, the actual public hearing.
Sure. With the actual public hearing is a notice was sent out to the public to be advised that you're going to make a presentation tonight, as opposed to preliminary, which is no action by the board.
Okay.
So this application was noticed to the public to be present tonight, that you were going to be proceeding with your application.
Okay. All right, so what happens after this preliminary?
It's not a preliminary.
Oh, sorry, okay.
You're on for a public hearing. So what's going to happen is, since we don't have a quorum, but the public was noticed of the hearing, you're going to make your presentation, we'll open it up to the public for the public to comment, you can respond, but then it's going to be adjourned for future consideration.
And that future consideration will take place when, please?
January 4th.
January 4th.
Which is our next meeting.
Okay. Sorry, I just, I was just wanting to know where we were.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. So, welcome to our meeting. If you could please just state your name and what you're, what you'd like to do.
Okay, my name is Michael Smith. I'm the Senior Director of Manufacturing for Bell Flavors and Fragrances here in Middletown. We are at 12 Sprague Avenue. What I'd like to do is, we're requesting the temporary placement and use of storage containers, five of them, typically eight foot wide by 40 feet in length, approximately eight feet high, on and within Bell's fenced in property. The containers are to be used to store raw materials during the reconfiguring, reconfiguration of an existing warehouse. There will be no hazardous waste stored in the containers. There will be no flammable stored in the containers. There may be combustibles stored in the containers. Any punctures and or spills will be dealt with immediately. We have a spill response plan in place, and we have folks trained in spill response. In fact, we're actually going to renew our training in spill response next week. We, we, that's our regularly scheduled time. All of the above items were reviewed on site with the Middletown Fire Inspector on 11/30/22. As a result of the review, the fire inspector made a recommendation to keep a clear path to the gates at the Benton Avenue Lot as noted on overall site plan mark E, and highlighted on the tax map 36/1/13, address 58. Bell will comply with this recommendation. We had planned to put a couple of containers in that particular area of the, of the parking lot, and what was asked is just to widen them up so there's a good clear path to get by them if needed.
And this is temporary? Do you know how long?
I'm hoping, and I'm being optimistic with any project, as everyone knows, sometimes things don't go the way you'd planned or take the time you planned. I'm optimistic, though, that we should be done with this within three to four months.
And at the ex, at, when you're done with that in three to four months, hopefully, the containers would be removed?
Completely removed. We don't want them on the property either. They're going to take up parking space, actually some prime parking space for our employees, so they're going to have to walk farther. They'll be in our, our upper parking lot, but they'll have to walk farther, and, you know, we try to do what we, the best we can for our employees, too.
Okay. All right, thank you. I would now like to open the public hearing. First, I'm going to read a letter that we received regarding the approval.
The application.
Application. This is, do I say who it's from?
Yep.
This is from Mark Crane, sent on Tuesday, December 6th, regarding Bell Flavors and Fragrances. Good afternoon, I'm responding to your letter regarding issuing a special use permit to Bell Flavors for five temporary use material storage containers. I oppose issuing this permit. I own the residence next to the parking lot that would be used for the temporary storage containers. I am assuming that containers will be used to store chemicals due to the nature of the work done at Bell. We do not know, and most likely won't know, what chemicals are stored here. Are they a health hazard, environmental hazard? What if there's a leak? It is a residential area and high-traffic road used by many people to drive and walk across Middletown. In addition, there are multiple schools and daycare facilities less than a quarter mile from this area. How would a leak and accident affect these facilities? The parking lot is next to a blind, sharp curve. Will trucks be backing into the lot to access or deliver the chemicals? Vehicles will not see these trucks until they are extremely close to them. The letter I received mentioned the word temporary. It has been my experience that temporary often turns into permanent. This would be a horrible location for chemical storage. It is a residential neighborhood. Bell can replan the refrigeration by possibly using all of the on-hand materials and shutting down the factory to reconfigure, replan, and work around their raw materials while the reconfiguration is going on. I am sure there are additional safer ways to work around the raw materials issue during the reconfiguration. Please contact me by telephone or email regarding this letter. Thank you sincerely, Mark Crane.
Does he have his address?
He does not.
But he, he lives next to the area of concern.
Correct. Okay. I would like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on the application? Okay. Martina, is there anyone on the phone?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone online?
Not, not at this time.
Okay. We'll keep the public hearing open. Do any of the board members have any kind of questions or concerns, or anything they'd like to be addressed?
Darren, you, you heard the letter and you visited the site. Is there any concerns?
I don't have any concerns. They're, they're under strict requirements on storage of any other chemicals that could be deemed hazardous at all. They have certain control areas and proper safeguards in place for any of those type of chemicals. So the raw materials and the stuff that can be stored outside of those areas are under a different, a different class and not under, held under the same scrutiny and protections. And that, and that's the stuff that I was told that will be stored in there. And I just want to also point out, too, that these temporary storage containers, according to code, they have to come to the planning board to get approval for these temporary storage containers, and the planning board can only approve, I believe it's up to six months anyway, so if they're there longer than that, they're in violation of the code, so.
Thank you.
And my understanding is there's not going to be deliveries on a regular basis. These are just taken from the warehouse, put them in there, and then when you're done. That, that is accurate, sir.
Okay. And all of these raw materials are stored on site regardless?
They're currently stored on site. They're, they're in the, the building we're reconfiguring.
Okay. Do you have any kind of like maintenance, or that something where somebody has to look at these trailers every day or every, like, you know, it must be some kind of protocol where you're checking to make sure nothing's leaking, making sure that all your contents are still in?
We, we will have something set up to do that, absolutely.
Gotcha. All right. Once again, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this application? No?
At this point, it would have to be adjourned for future consideration, so if you want to take a vote, a motion to that effect, to adjourn it for future consideration. Again, apologizing to the applicant that we don't have a quorum here tonight, so no further action can be taken on it tonight.
Okay. Is there anything further you need from me?
You would have to come back next month and, again, make another presentation because there are three board members that hopefully will be present next month. And so they would need to hear the application as well, but the public hearing stays open, so there's no further notice requirement.
Okay. Does he need to do anything to get on the agenda?
No, it would be on the agenda.
Okay.
I didn't close the public hearing.
Can't close the public hearing. Public hearing, you're going to make a motion to keep the public hearing open and adjourned for future consideration.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to keep the public hearing open and to vote on this for future consideration. Roll call.
Nope. You have a motion.
A motion, I'm sorry. Motion, Dave, great. A second, and, oh, Mr. Britto, a second. Roll call. Mr. Madden.
Yes.
Mr. Britto.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
See you next month.
Again, our apologies.
It's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's why I was a second choice, yeah.
I'm back. For a short period of time. All right. Next on the agenda is a preliminary hearing only, not for any act, future action, but for future presentation, possible action by the, at a date not yet determined. Universal Communication Network, Inc., 39 to 50 Dulson Avenue, Office Building.
Okay, good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Member of the Board. Uh, my name's Jianhu with JH Architecture. I'm representing this project, which is 41 Dulson Avenue Office Plaza Project. The site is located, you can see, this is a colored site plan here. Actually, existing building is two-story office building, it's a renovation proj, I'm sorry, I didn't realize. It's a two-story office renovation project. Original site is about six acres with plenty of green space on the backyard. We preserve that as a green space. We did renovation on this existing footprint, plus a little bit addition on the south wing, a little bit at the entrance part. If you, I don't know if everyone has a floor plan. If you look at that floor plan, basically, it's a straightforward project with two-story office, single use only by the owner, and with cafeteria for interior, for employee use only. Second floor has addition about 3,000 square foot videos studio, sitting in the middle of the intersection part. Basically, that's total square footage is about 40,000 square foot. It's sitting in the, located in the A dash 1A zone. So per parking requirements, per zoning, it's required total 135 cars. We proposed 154. 154, thank you. 154 cars, including five ADA parking, plus one ADA van parking. So if you see the site plan here, that's existing footprint, that's existing parking on the front. So that's existing curb card for the entrance, existing entrance. That's pretty much is it. You're welcome to raise any questions.
Darren, have you looked at it as far as fire?
I have not been able to get into the details of it. I did have a couple of questions, though. The addition that you're putting in on the south side, that's two stories?
That's a two-story high, but one story, one big volume. That means a little atrium, something like that, with a stair. You, you will see the plan, second floor plan has a stair. Has a stair there connecting ground floor with the second floor. But beyond that, beyond that stair is open space, just a higher volume.
Okay, and the other addition that you're putting in for the studio?
Yeah.
That's going up?
Going up.
So you'll be adding a third floor?
No.
In that area?
No, existing building, that part is one-story only.
That part is one-story only?
So we just add up to second story.
Got it.
Mr. Chairman, has this gone to Clark, our engineer?
There's nothing to show them. This, we've seen nothing but preliminary drawings.
We did the, I'm sorry.
In fact, they've, they've changed it from a four-story, they've did additions, and this is, this is their final kind of draft. So they're working on plans. So before, we just wanted to introduce it to the board.
Yep.
And then the gentleman will produce some more plans, site plans, so that our, our engineer can start reviewing with you.
Mm-hmm, sure, sure. And we did a traffic study. We completed traffic study already. The conclusion is that considering all the program and the cars requirements, they don't have, didn't gen, doesn't generate significant impact to existing traffic pattern. That's a conclusion from traffic study.
Does that drawing, drawing show the footprint of the building now? And?
Yeah, if you see the borderline here, that's existing footprint.
Yeah.
That's parking. Yeah, that's parking. And somewhere there. So we expand a little. Yeah.
Well, that's what our engineer is going to have to determine.
We couldn't do that before because it was in limbo.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
We're saying they're probably going to need some kind of an environmental study to, since you're going to be paving more of the area.
Making more impervious area, but.
The engineer will.
Sure, actually, the backyard parking is pretty big. We can, if that's the case, we can consider to use existing, whatever existing, to use existing parking without any thing new. Maybe that's better cost-wise.
So the board knows, too, we've also requested a traffic study? Because there are going to be more people at this location.
The applicant said he completed the traffic study.
He said he completed it, no, uh, yeah, he said he completed it, no, uh.
Yeah. Yeah.
Obviously, our engineer will have to review that traffic study.
Okay.
Could I just make a comment real quick? When you're, when you're looking at the rear of that building, the plan they have, the entire rear of that building is blacktop right now, a significant amount back. So they're actually, you know, reconfiguring that and adding green space back in to the rear of that building. And then pushing that lot out, just so you guys know.
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't think the board has any other questions. So I think the next step is to make your final plans and submit that and get with Martina to establish an escrow for our engineer to start his review process.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay.
Thank you very much to us.
Motion to adjourn. So moved unanimous.